Okay, we start. Hello everyone, welcome to the Forced Displacement and Urban Management Conference 2021, Special Session 2 Voices of Refugees, if I were to describe myself in one word. The session is expected to provide a point of view on how refugee communities and refugee-led organizations are empowering themselves and contributing to the society through their work in the field. First of all, let me introduce myself. My name is Ali Raza Yowari. I'm a refugee from Afghanistan, living in Makassar, Indonesia. I was the founder of AIM, Afghan innovative migrants learning community, a refugee-led learning center in Kupan. I also have produced several documentary and short films which have been screened in different platforms, events, and the Global Migration Film Festival, GMFF 2018 and 2019. I have been contributing with RDI URF and different projects since 2019, and I will be your moderator for today. Before going to the main session, I would like to lay the procedures of this session. We would like to encourage you to join the session through your laptop or desktop. During the session, please ask your questions and raise a discussion through the chat platform, specifically during the Q&amp;A session. You can raise your hand and we will let you unmute yourself and ask your questions. Kindly fill in the attendees feedback form that will be provided on the chat feature. The session summary will be provided through our social media platform and also elaborated during the closing plenary today at 3:30 PM Jakarta time. Since the session is designed to empower people, we only allow positive words and comments for the speakers. Moving forward, I would like to explain how the session will be conducted. First of all, besides using this Zoom, we will also interactively utilize Miro platform as an interactive written platform. I will introduce the speakers and it will be followed up by the storytelling from each speaker. Q&amp;A session will be conducted after two speakers deliver their story. Please ask your questions during the session. We will also share the link to Miro platform. Kindly open it and write your positive and encouraging words for the speakers and other refugees out there. We will now watch the short tutorial on how to use Miro platform.
Dear participants, this video will provide you a basic tutorial on how to collaborate interactively within Special Session 2 Voices of Refugees using Miro platform. We encourage you to join the session through your laptop or desktop. During the Special Session 2, you will be provided a link to connect with Miro platform through the Zoom chat. Kindly copy and paste or click the link feature to your browser. Please click right here and you will be directed to face the same board with RDI URF. By then, you can try to zoom in and zoom out using your mouse or touchpad. On your left screen, you will see the specific features that we'll be using during the session. The first one, select. The second one, sticky notes. And third, connection. You might see the board has provided you the template to work on, and each speaker has been assigned with different color. You can directly type your encouraging word for the speaker by first clicking Select Feature, then double-clicking the empty sticky notes here. Later on, if you want to add another sticky note to type one encouraging word for the speakers, kindly use the speaker's color. An example, for Rafi, kindly use the blue sticky notes. Track your note here, type your word, and connect the sticky note by clicking the blue dot here and connect it with other sticky notes. You can choose which arrow you would like to choose. For a longer encouraging word, just track your sticky notes toward the bottom part of this frame and type whatever positive messages you want to deliver. I hope this tutorial will help you enjoy the session. Thank you.
Okay, as was mentioned, my participants, please go to the Miro platform through the link and leave your positive messages for our speaker.
Dear participants, this
Today in a special session 2, sorry. Today in a special session 2 of the conference, I'm honored to host four guest speakers in our panel session. First is Jamaluddin Muhammadi, who is residing in Jakarta, Indonesia. Saeda Hussain, who is currently in Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia. And we have Rafael Hawi, who is now in Manila, Philippines. And Alina Mark, our last speaker, who is living in Jakarta, Indonesia. We will now welcome our first speaker, Jamaluddin Muhammadi. Jamal is originally from Afghanistan, but he grew up in Iran as a refugee. He stayed in Iran and studied in the university. With the hope together with his family that has resided in Australia, he is now in Indonesia waiting for the resettlement. He started to use his time in a positive way by teaching English to other refugees in his room and self-governing schools for refugees. He hopes one day we experience a world without any hatred, where all people live together and no one has to leave their home. Please welcome our first speaker, Jamal. This screen is yours.
Okay, hello everyone. My name is Jamal. I'm originally from Afghanistan and, as Ali said, I grew up in Iran as a refugee. And then in 2013, I came to Indonesia and since then I've been here waiting for resettlement. There's a video that I'd like to share with you. It was made a few years ago when I was teaching refugees in a learning center called Roshan. It's more or less about my journey and also it is related to the word that I introduced myself. So Ali, would you please play the video?
Okay.
I feel like I've been running for all of my life. I was born in Afghanistan. My father was a Shia Muslim. In that time, Taliban didn't allow Shias to practice their religion. My father was forced to leave Afghanistan, like many other Shias. So we moved to Iran in the early 90s. Iran, you remember, welcomed Afghan refugees. Don't have the same job opportunities and education opportunities there. As an adult, I decided to go back to Afghanistan to find a job. But unfortunately, I wasn't welcomed there as well. Ultimately, I decided to join my family in Australia. Many Afghan refugees tried to go to Australia like me, but it's a very difficult and dangerous trip. We have to pay to smugglers. I paid once in Iran and another time in Malaysia. But when I came here, the door was closed and I realized that I have to stay here for resettlement. Even though I've been accepted as a refugee for three years, but I'm still waiting for resettlement here. Living as a refugee is very difficult.
Refugees and asylum seekers don't belong to anyone. They don't belong to the Indonesian government. They don't belong to the aid agencies whose mission is here to help Indonesians. They don't belong to businesses because businesses get no bragging rights for supporting refugees. Refugees and asylum seekers are truly marginalized, left out, abandoned. What we do here is create an opportunity for people-to-people connection.
Roshan gives us the opportunity not to waste this huge time and to make the best use of it. I felt very grateful to find Roshan because it gives me the sense of having a community. It allowed me to move forward in my life as a student. And now as a teacher, I help others to move forward in their lives.
We see people's lives being touched here and how they change from feeling helpless and disempowered to feel like they can do something.
I never felt like home in Iran or Afghanistan. I know that Jakarta is also not home, but Roshan is home now. Where I can learn, I can teach, I can help others. And I'm very grateful that I have this opportunity.
No one here is alone. No one here is on their own anymore, isolated. Everyone here is part of the community because we've created this net together that's keeping us strong.
Okay, thank you, Ali. Yeah, it is home now. Actually, the video was made years ago. Things have changed from that time. Now I really feel different about Indonesia and I'm sure I will miss it when I leave. Plus, Indonesian people are very kind and I'm so grateful to meet such people in my life. I have made a lot of friends here, learned a lot by living among from them. You know, it's hard to get connected with a new environment and then again, it's hard to let it go and get disconnected. Anyways, I did not expect to stay in Indonesia for such a long time. Neither did other refugees nor the Indonesian immigration. We're all waiting here for a solution from outside. Sometimes it feels like wasting the best days of life here. However, when I look back, I realize there was no opportunity that I missed. I'm happy to be here because at least there's a hope for a better future that makes it easier to wait for years. So Indonesia is a transit country with no working or studying permission for refugees and does not offer us permanent residence. The biggest challenge for refugees here is providing the costs of living. Refugees receive allowance from families or friends outside who have their own difficulties supporting refugees for so long. So me, right after arriving, I started using my time in a positive way by teaching English to other refugees in my room and self-governing schools for refugees. I also do Muay Thai and join some local competitions, but I could not continue professionally because there's no support for fighters. Not only for fighters, there are artists, musicians, and other professionals among refugees that cannot work in their field during their stay in Indonesia. Anyways, recently, I'm very grateful to find a way to an international university here. There are very few refugees studying in this university compared to the whole number of refugees interested and able to be university students. Right now, the only option for most refugees is studying English in refugee schools. Even English classes are always full and all schools have long waiting lists showing how important education is for refugees. So as I mentioned before, the biggest challenge for refugees in Indonesia is waiting for years without being ready for it. Some people stay positive and do whatever they can, such as giving services to, giving services in refugee schools, communities, and other related NGOs as teachers, translators, and activists. Some others cannot hold it and fall into deep depression. We even had several suicide cases among refugees recently. Also, sometimes refugees hold demonstration in front of the UNHCR's office asking for resettlement. But UNHCR says it is the governments that decide about the resettlement and not them. So the situation for me looks like a problem for all sides, like refugees, UNHCR, Indonesian government. But it is caused by none of them. And in my opinion, everyone is doing their best to find solutions. For example, I heard that GRS is talking with immigration about working permission for refugees. Or for example, from the learning centers, Roshan has a program for refugees to take GED certificate so that they are prepared for university. Indonesian government kindly allows us to stay in Indonesia and be uninvited guests for all these years. And UNHCR does all the official work for us to be resettled as soon as possible. I believe that the countries that accept refugees are not neglecting us. Maybe from a different point of view, but I'm sure that they care about refugees as they are accepting us and sharing their countries with us. And it is understandable if they need time to prepare for it. So, as you probably guessed, if I introduce myself in one word, it would be a runner, as you saw in the video. I've been running for the whole life, both literally and figuratively. I ran away from Afghanistan to Iran and it didn't work well there because Afghan refugees in Iran are only allowed to work in factories or construction. Even educated ones cannot have an office job. But the problem for me was that I gave my refugee card in order to receive a student visa there. And before my student visa finishes, I get deported back to Afghanistan and face the same old dangerous issues. I decided to run to Indonesia and register in UNHCR and apparently I will continue running from here to other places sooner or later. So I also go running several times a week and if I don't, I feel something missed. So running has a deep meaning in my life. Those of you who do it regularly, my degree that in the middle of running when you feel tired, there are two voices in your head. One voice says it's enough and you can't do it anymore. But the other voice encourages you to keep running. After you follow the second voice, you will see your capabilities are miscalculated even by yourself because those two voices are you. I'm not talking about what other people think about us, but there are times in our life that we have those two voices in our head and running helps me practice and remember that disappointment or discouragement or any other negatives are neither always true nor always promoted by others. I mean, sometimes it's me stopping myself from doing things that I'm actually able to do. Also, there is this contradiction that I experienced while running and it is feeling both exhaustion and pleasure at the same time. And I believe life itself is full of exhaustions, but pleasure is something we must learn how to feel in any situation. So that is why I like running and I call myself as a runner. At the end of my presentation, I would like to say I'm very happy to be here today. As a refugee, I would like to thank all people and communities who support us. To be honest, for me, it sucks to be a refugee, but at the same time, I'm grateful to be a refugee because it became the reason for me to meet people who are so kind that think and care about other people's lives, especially refugees who have lost everything. I hope one day we experience a world without any hatred, where all people live together and no one has to leave their home. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Jamal. Thank you. Thank you very much for your impressive story and describing yourself as a runner. Please leave your questions to Jamal on our Zoom chat feature. Moving forward, we have Saeda Hussain, a community manager at Ruengyo Women Development Network. She manages the daily operations to attend emergency cases and provide case management to community members. At Ruengyo Women Development Network, she and the team especially advocate for the rights of the Ruengyo community through the meetings and conferences. Saeda Hussain, please go on.
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. Yeah, my name is Saeda. When I, two years, my mom decided to come Malaysia. But in Myanmar, we don't have any opportunity and don't have any right for the school. Many, many things we don't, cannot do anything in Myanmar. That's why my mom decided to come Malaysia. Then when we came Malaysia, that time it's the situation Malaysia is bad because at that time, don't have school for the refugee. Then we cannot walk in Malaysia. That's why it's very difficult at that time in Malaysia. But now, alhamdulillah, my daughter and my sister all go to school. But that time, we cannot go to school. That's why when I 50 years old, then I got married. Then same year, I have my first child. Then I, when I see my daughter, I don't want to become like me. My daughter also don't have education, don't have any. I don't know anything like, you know, for the people, for my community. I don't know. That's why I want to learn. I want to help my community and I want to teach my daughter. Like, he want to learn, he want to do something, then he got married. Before he learn, he do something, he got married. So many things he have to face. Like 15 years old, he have to born the baby. He know the, like, how to care the baby. We mind in my body, but it's not ready for the born baby. But that time, I born my first child. That's why I want to help my community and my daughter, not save my life. Then I go out and my husband also a lot help me. He also looking NGO for the learn and teach, like a livelihood program and English class, Arabic class. I want to learn this all. But that time, don't have any NGO like this. NGO have, but for the men, not women. But I think 2017, first time my cousin sister go to Gumba area and they have a WDN office. Then she came back and she told everyone, come, WDN for the, especially women and children. A lot of thing they are teaching and they are. You can go there and you can see a lot of thing they do to the women and children. Then my husband decide, yes, you have to go. Then my sister and go there, then we see there how founder is Sharifah Shakira. Then I met her first 2017. Then we learn a lot. We learn a lot there, like domestic violence, child abuse cases. We learn English, we learn Malay, also we learn Arabic, we learn livelihood program, livelihood, some still do the make by the hand, the gearing tester. Like this all we do. Now, first I joined the WDN student. Now I am community manager in the WDN. Yeah, I now I help my community. Like I, whatever I learn from WDN, I teach back to my community and my daughter. Yeah, that's why I'm sensible what I use because I always time I see the people come, the ask the help from me. I always will, their attention is my attention. Their problem is my problem. That's why I feel I sensible. Thank
Thank you. Thank you very much, Saeda, for sharing your amazing life story. Please ask Saeda any questions so that you can hear more of her perspective. So now we are entering our Q&amp;A, Q&amp;A session 1. So we are now entering to ask and see the answer and hear the answer from Jamal and Saeda. Please leave your questions and discussions on Zoom chat and we will help to connect your questions with our speakers. And parallel with this Q&amp;A session, please leave the speaker's positive and empowering words through Miro platform that you have linked and the chat box because your encouraging words are very important to those who might have been struggling and currently finding the solutions. If you need any help, you can personally chat RDI URF, Teresa Zoom for technical assistance. So I have got a question here. Please, both of you, Jamal and Saeda, possible to answer. What can refugees do to help themselves and others as well?
Saeda, you want to go first?
Yes, you go first.
Okay. To help myself and others? I think I always think, I always look at helping others as actually helping myself because, you know, for example, when I was teaching refugees, sometimes refugees were saying like, "Thank you, you spend your time for us." And I say, "Don't say thank you" because if you tell me thank you once because of what I did to you, I say 10 times or 100 times more than you because of, you know, the opportunity that you gave me to teach you and learn things. And I believe when we help others, actually, we help ourselves. And then to help us help ourselves, it's important to love yourself. You know, it is very important because there are ups and downs in everyone's life and it is, it is not good if someone just, when they feel down, they just stay there and not to move on and just blame themselves. So it is important to love yourself, whatever, you know, in any situation.
Yeah. This one is very true. I also believe that one. When I help the women and children, I think I help myself, not other one. Their attention, their problem is my problem. I help them like this. Yeah, it's same.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Jamal. Thank you, Saeda. Very comprehensive answers from both of you. We have got another question here from Jenny. The question is, what practical steps can you share with other displaced youth or refugees in general who are facing difficulties or they are stuck and have no idea what to do in the future? And how do you encourage them?
You know, so there is a sentence that says, from Quran, that says, after any hardship, there is a, what is it called in English? Like an easy, easy situation after that. So I believe that it is important to remind ourselves and others that, you know, hardship or pain is just temporary, it's not permanent. And then after that, there is another step, there is another, yeah, step that comes after that. And it's worth, it's worth to feel pain and it's worth to work hard for that. I think it's important to remind that to ourselves and others.
Yeah. Saeda?
Yeah, we have Arabic class like one week, two times. Ustazah teach the how the Awanabee is face problem. A lot of problem they are faced that come in the that time we are feel all, we, this all problem is small, small thing. You know, that's why we are always time we are learning for our Arabic classes. Then we are realize ourselves. Then always time, my mom told me, problem is not too big. We are too small, that's why we cannot handle the problem. This one is my mind, my mind always time we, I have. But that's why I, I'm, I'm teach other people also like this.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, the words are quite encouraging for refugees, including myself. Uh so we have got another question from Riska, and she is thanking you for sharing your stories. And she wants to ask that what are the most challenging aspects you encounter during your work in the field? Or with the community and how do you tackle these challenges?
Uh Saida, you wanna go?
Yes, you go first.
Okay, uh sorry, I need to read again the, the question. Um, what are the most challenging aspects you, you encountered during your work? In the field or with community? Yeah, I think the, the, the most biggest challenge is um. That uh first take care of yourself, because if you're not healthy, if you're not uh positive. You, you can't help others, you just make everything worse for others. I think, yeah, the most challenge is just make sure that you're in a good um condition. And then try to like um think about um helping others because if you're not uh in a good situ, in a good condition, you cannot do it.
Okay, Saida.
Um my son, because I am woman. My community women cannot go outside and walking and cannot do anything, that's why I have. There's a lot of problem uh when I, I join WDN. That thing I feel like, I want. I, when I see the men, I want to talk like, uh, okay, I, women, I, I have always time I told them, I am woman, yes, I am woman, yes. Then I, I don't know better you, but I give some. Yeah, idea like this I can share them, but women I can share all thing, but something for the men, I.
Yeah, thank you, we, we have got many other questions, so there's a question from Akino Tahir. Uh specifically to Jamal, what has running as a sport taught you in life? And why did you run in the beginning?
Um, so in the beginning, uh I was just thinking about uh the physical benefits of running, like uh. Being in shape and, and good cardiovascular, uh because I, I do martial arts, but after a while, I. Uh, now I just, I rarely think about the, the physical benefits. Uh, running for me is like um, you know, a practice, a practice to remember. Uh, that, uh you know, after, after hardship, there is um easiness. So that is wh- why I still keep running.
Yeah, thank you, thank you Jamal, we have another question here from Vina. Uh, Sanchya, for both the speakers, what is your biggest turning point to be you now? Uh, the current version of yourself, what is your biggest turning point?
Uh, for me, the biggest turning point, if my English is not good, if I'm, if I understand the question correctly. The biggest turning point is that I, I realized uh there are many good people in the world. Uh, because I used to, uh you know, I used to think more neg- in a negative way, like when, you know. Maybe it's because, it was because of the environment, but now I saw that there are, there are good people in, in the world.
Yeah, same, before I came Malaysia, I came Malaysia first two thousand, a lot of problem in Malaysia. But now, alhamdulillah, a lot of people know about refugee, a lot of school have like, yeah, same. With Jamal.
Hmm hmm, I really appreciate that, we have a lot of appreciations here in the chat box, special one from Rishad Duviani. Hi Jamal and Saida, thank you for sharing this story and positive thoughts, she admires your resilience. Then we have another question, specific to Saida, from Matilda. As a mother and now being a community leader to support fellow refugees. In your opinion, how has the perspective of education for girls or women change since you arrived in Malaysia?
Um, for the education is very important, when woman and men, for the women and the men. Because uh when we have educate and learn something, we can spot ourselves. Because uh I from my fam, fam, friend, a lot of friend, like they are like twelve, thirty, they are married, then. Uh, they are twenty, twenty years old, they have already three, four children. Then she, her husband is pass away, then she don't know how she want to go, do what. She don't, uh she don't have educated, she don't, cannot speak the Malay. Then a lot of problems she face, her children also face the same problems with mother. That's why education is very important, women and children, uh, men also, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, quite comprehensive, thank you Saida, thank you Jamal, thank you for answering the questions and your uh beautiful presentations and our session. Thank you very much.
I would like to say thank you to all the uh, uh people here, I, I, I read the words. And I really appreciate the good positive energy that they gave me and thank you.
Okay, uh moving on, we have our third speaker who is Rafi Alhawi. Mister Rafi arrived in the Philippines on September nineteen eighty-six on a student visa and became the first Palestinian refugee. To be accepted in the country in nineteen eighty-eight. In July twenty eighteen, together with one Lebanese and three Filipinos, he formed the Philippine Arab Cooperation Council and Corporation. Paqui as a humanitarian association for helping the needy Arabs who are refugees, asylum seekers, non-refugees, orphans and widows. And their problems, Mister Rafi, the floor is yours.
Thank you Ali. Hello, everyone, uh, my name is Rafi Alhawi, I'm Palestinian. I'm from the popular Gaza Strip. I think a lot of you, if not all of you, are aware of Gaza Strip. I will divide my presentation to four parts. The first one, or number one, it's about my background and experience with the different UNHCR partner agencies. Since I became a refugee. They are, I'm referring to the partner agencies of UNHCR. They are Refugee Assistance Foundation, RAF. Refugee Services Philippines Incorporated, RSBI. Community and Family Services International, CFSI. So there are three. Until the year nineteen ninety-eight, we were refugees under UNHCR. After nineteen ninety-eight, the responsibility went from UNHCR to the Philippine government. So until the year nineteen ninety-eight, we were refugees under UNHCR, receiving monthly subsistence allowance. Life care, medical insurance, business capital. Allowed to work, but must secure first work permit. Allowed to study, but must secure student visa. Allowed to own forty percent of a business. I arrived to the Philippines as a student on September nineteen eighty-six. I applied as a refugee on nineteen ninety-eight, after the first intifada or uprising in Palestine. Which was on nineteen eighty-seven, during that time, I was having a very hard time. Managing my financial situation, financial problems and paying my tuition fees. And I was accepted as a refugee on October ninety-eight. According to the UNHCR officer, at that time, I was the first Palestinian to be accepted as a refugee in the Philippines. In the year nineteen nineteen, nineteen ninety-one, many Palestinians became refugees in the Philippines after the first Gulf War. When Iraq invaded Kuwait. During that time, Palestinian students in the Philippines who came from Kuwait were banned from returning back to Kuwait. While others were forced to leave Kuwait after it was deported. That was because the Palestinian leader, Yasser Arafat, at that time, uh he was citing. Right for their action, for the hope that one day uh Iraq will help in liberating Palestine. So that's why uh. The impact was negative on the Palestinians living in Kuwait. Thank God, because of the help of UNHCR subsistence allowance. I was able to finish my study of business administration. Through a correspondence study at an international correspondence school. However, study was not my, my study was not accredited as equivalent to BS degree in the Philippines. I worked in many companies in the Philippines, I started as sales agent. Sales trainer and sales manager as well. I worked in vitamin company, detergent company, credit card agent at Standard Chartered Bank, Sepulsi Pins. And in nineteen ninety-six, RSBI, that is the, the UNHCR partner agency at that time. Granted me a small capital to start a business of my own in the province of Bohol, where I was living. And that's the province, uh home province of my one and only wife. We invested in becoming a distributor of the products of House of Sarali. It's a direct selling uh company in the Philippines. Uh, we were selling the products on thirty days credit. But later on, we ran out of cash. Uh, because of the much uncollected credits. Or uncollected uh payments for the sold products, which brought us to bankruptcy. In the year two thousand three, I left Bohol, coming back to Manila to look for work again. At that time, I worked as employee in an overseas recruitment agency for the Middle East. The agency was owned by an Arab. I learned much there and later on, I had an arrangement with one of the agency owners. Who worked for my personal account, using his agency in exchange for some amount for the processing fees. And he agreed. So, in that time, I registered myself or with the help of the CFSI, I was uh. Uh, CFSI was the partner agency at that time with their help, I was registered with the Overseas Employment Administration. The Philippine Overseas Employment Administration, Administration or POEA. And the, on the year twenty seventeen. The Philippine government banned all foreign nationals to work in the overseas uh recruitment agencies or business. Because this war is exclusive for Filipinos, according to Philippine laws. Since that time, I stopped working in the recruitment business except for consultation only. On July twenty eighteen. I, together with the Filipino retired lawyer from the Department of Justice. A Filipino doctor. A Lebanese friend who is married to Filipino. And residing in Dubai. And my wife formed the Philippine Arab Cooperation Council Incorporated or PAXI. As a humanitarian, nonprofit, non-stud association dedicated to helping the Arab community in the Philippines. Including refugees, asylum seekers, orphans and widows of Arabs. As well as Filipino Muslims. We then added one Filipino Muslim aboard. He is a current presidential advisor to the Philippine president as our chairman emeritus. Now we are adding a Syrian refugee businessman also as vice president and member of the board. All of the above are working gratis, without any salary or benefits. And sometimes paying from their own pockets. Although our findings was coming only from the Arabs in the country. And we don't have outside. Already helped many of our needy Arab brothers. Because we believe that should help the poor. We were also working hand in hand with the Community and Family Services International or CFSI. With UNHCR Philippines. Commission on Human Rights or CHR Philippines. Philippine, uh as well as the Department of Justice, Refugees and Stateless Person Protection Unit. Or DOJ RSRSPPU, international level. In the regional level, we are now a bona fide member of the Asia-Pacific Refugee Rights Network or APREN. Which is based in Bangkok, Thailand. We are a member of Asia-Pacific Network of Refugees or UPNOR. And member of the Refugee Leadership Alliance. The situation of the refugees in the Philippines, that is the second part. So I'm starting now the second part, the situation of the refugees in the Philippines is totally different from the situation of the refugees. And the other Southeast Asian countries. This is because the Philippines is a signatory of the United Nations Refugee Convention. The one, uh it's nineteen sixty-seven protocol. Unlike the refugees in other Southeast Asian countries, in the Philippines, the refugees are now allowed to. Work without work. Study, without a student visa, own a business one hundred percent. Have freedom of movement, when, anywhere in the country. Have a Philippine travel document valid for five years. Can travel anywhere in the world, provided that he have valid visa for travel. Can travel either using his national passport or the Philippine travel document that is valid for five years. Refugees now have full health medical insurance, which is exclusive only for Filipino citizens. And lately, refugees who graduated from Filipino colleges and universities. With courses that requires board exams are now allowed to take the board exam. And if they pass, they can practice their provision. Number three, or the third part, among the obstacles that the refugees in the Philippines are encountering are. A. Since the Philippine government has banned the foreign nationals from working in the overseas recruitment. Many refugees have become either unemployed or work still in the recruitment business, but illegally. And if caught, they will be harassed uh by the Philippine police or the government authorities. And we have many cases among the Arab refugees regarding this. There been, although the refugees are allowed to work without work permit. Many cannot find work, just like Filipinos do. And many refuse to work with a very low paying jobs. Which according to them cannot sustain their basic needs. Refugees are allowed to study, but yet. Many of them cannot afford to pay for the schools of or the college tuition fees. Likewise, the refugees are allowed to own business one hundred percent ownership. And some they own uh restaurants, travel agencies. Uh food businesses online. While many don't have the capital to start a small business in the first place. But they're saying. We have here a problem regarding asylum seekers asylum seekers unless they have a valid student visa or working visa. They are not allowed to study and they cannot have a stable work. Because they are allowed to have only temporary work permit valid for six months. Most companies don't want to hire employees like them because of the short term period. And the need to train them for few months. We have so many asylum seekers that have been waiting for several years. Without being accepted or denied. And many of them were not even interviewed until now. Number four or the fourth part of my presentation. And finally, after looking at the situation of the refugees in Malaysia. Indonesia and Thailand. I see how lucky are the refugees in the Philippines. With much gratitude to the Philippine government, the great Filipino people. UNHCR Philippines, CHR Philippines as well see if it's. Or all their support and wavering assistance to the cause of the refugees and asylum seekers in the Philippines. And. I would like to thank all of them for standing beside the Philippine Arab Operation Council Inc. In our journey to be humanitarian arm, may God bless you all. And to the organizers of this event. Thank you very much for inviting me to be one of the resource speakers. And for your entry in the refugee problems. God bless you all. More power to all of you. And if I have to choose the one word that describes me. It will be leader. This is because I am now recognized with the Arab community in the Philippines. As well as many Middle East embassies. As the leader of the Arab community. My final words to all my refugee brothers and sisters in the world is. Always think of what you can do to help yourself and to help others. Always be an act to the community. Thank you very much to all. Back to you, Ali.
Thank you very much. Thanks a lot. Uh thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rafi, for giving us a very inspiring lifetime story. It's great to hear your effort to collaborate with other stakeholders to help the needy Arabs, including refugees. Uh please leave your questions or discussions and Zoom chat and do not forget to fill in the feedback form that will soon be shared also in Zoom chat. Our last speaker of today is Alina Mark. Alina is a thirty nine years old dentist originally from Sudan. She is nine years experienced dentist. She fled her country and arrived in Indonesia in twenty seventeen. She has since been recognized as a refugee by UNSR. In Indonesia, she had worked as partnership development manager and teacher at Russian Learning Center in Jakarta for two years. Currently, she works as an academic advisor and math teacher at For All Learning Center. Alina, the time is yours.
Thank you, Ali. Thank you uh for having me today. Uh it's a pleasure to be with all of you. So um. Uh you always, you can call me Alina. Derek, you don't need to call me a doctor. No one called me that here. So I'm originally, as Ali mentioned, I'm originally from Sudan. So before I become a refugee. I will be honest, I didn't know the word of refugee. I didn't even know that. There an existing world of refugee and uh now after I became one of the refugee, I started to discover that. It the earth, it's like divided to two halves. One half is the world of refugee where they're they almost. In most places and most countries, they don't have any rights and the other part of the half or the other part of the world is. Whereas everyone with their normal people, they have their citizenship, they have their passport, they have their full and complete rights. Uh so I arrived here in two thousand seventeen and I have been here in Indonesia for uh four years now. I lived in uh different places, I moved to different cities and. I always heard the questions that people asking me why you choose Indonesia and I. It's not just me people asking this question. I heard other people also asking different questions to refugees uh like. If they are living in Iran, so why you went to Iran? If they're living in Turkey, why you went to Turkey? So one of the things that I always tell people who doesn't know about refugees, it's not an optional. Sometimes it's not an optional. It's sometimes it's just like what is possible, I just I will go with it. To save my life, to run away from uh. Whatever I'm running away from, whether it's war, whether it's discrimination, either it's because of religion or because of Horus. Or because of race. So it's a it could be a different reasons, but. Uh we don't have the privilege of to choose which country we should go to. Because I think if we if we have the privilege to choose, I'm sure all the refugees will simply choose to go immediately to. One of the countries that immediately will give us uh that they will accept us as a refugee and they will give us citizenship like Australia, US, Canada. We're not going to jump in a transit country where almost we don't have that much rights. Uh to do because refugees in transit countries, they don't have almost any rights. Uh students and people, they they are not allowed to go to normal formal school because they don't have a citizenship. They don't have a permit visa, so they are cannot get a national number. So they cannot take go to a normal school and they cannot go to a normal college. They can they are not able to work. Eh even with the health system, it's becoming very difficult for them. They are not allowed to work. There are many uh, there are many uh problems that refugees are facing. It's not just in Indonesia. I think it's in all the transit countries refugees are facing almost the same problems. Which is lack of rights. Uh one of the things that also I noticed since I arrived here four years ago. A woman and children in a refugee community, they almost they don't have a voice. It's becoming, it's changing right now, but it's still not enough changing. Because especially women, they can face violence, they can face uh domestic violence, family violence. Or even like violence from the community or from different communities if they are single women. Uh harassing everything and because they don't have rights and most of them, they don't know what they should do. To to protect themselves, to help themselves and. No one, almost no one is listening to them and it that the process, the bureaucracy of the process, it's very long to give them the full protection. With the freedom. So it's not that easy process to go. It takes longer time and during that longer time. The emotional support, the psychological support, it's almost lacking, even with the children, with the education. Now we, you can consider it as we have a lost generations here. It's not just in Indonesia. Think in Indonesia, in Malaysia, why we have a children who are like fourteen, fifteen years old, they're sixteen. And they never went to school in their lives or they went to school like uh for three, four years and this is it. They don't have uh. Any certificates to help them in their future. We can lose these children for radicalism. We can lose these children. For all the bad thoughts and the bad ideas, they can turn to be violence. That's that's a very dangerous thing. That's one of the reasons. The moment I arrived here, I started immediately to work with the learning centers. Uh so first, because that's my only option, I'm not allowed to work here as a dentist. Uh because I don't have a working visa and I'm not permitted to work as dentist here. And second, the learning center was the only thing available that I can be able to help other people. And going out and speaking about refugees. So education, one of the, one of the important things that can help. Refugees, children, women and men. And when I'm saying refugees, children, women and uh it's I'm not accepting men. Actually, education should be available for everyone. And after that, I moved the work would be on the fabric also as educational coordinator and now currently I'm working with a for all as academic advisor. It's not that easy task to try to help, especially when you put the number of the learning centers that we have. Uh whether in Jakarta or in Bugor or in Chisarua and comparing to and almost five thousand. Underage children who are refugees. We don't have spaces for all of them. So it's a very long waiting list. Uh it's it's not an easy task, but I see refugees who are trying very hard every single day. Uh to help each other, to educate themselves. I see children, they simply open YouTube's if they are not allowed. They don't have a place to go to uh uh any learning centers. They simply open YouTube and you start to learn English from YouTube and when you hear their accent. You you it's a surprise because you think that they were born in US or in England or somewhere that that's amazing. So when you have a child like that. Who who is very smart and you cannot give that child a proper education, it's a complete. A waste of a future. That's what we are facing every single day. That's what we are facing and it's not just us. It's I can't. I can feel the pain from the family and failed pain from the parents. It's moving to a better situation now according eh in in when we compare the education for the girls. Like four years ago and now, now you can see the parents especially, they are going to the learning center and they say. We want to educate our girl. We want to educate the girls in the school, in our house. We want them to learn. We want them. Uh to to be able to depend on themselves. So uh the good thing about that, it's not everywhere, but the good about that, that's it's the idea of. The girls or the woman, the old chicks stay in the house and not to be educated and you know, someone will take care of them. It's not that strong idea as before, which is a good. It's still there. But it's not as strong as before. Now people believe that everyone should depend on themselves, even the girls or the women. And uh one of the things also I noticed during these uh four years, uh the hospitality of the Indonesian people. And I I can tell you exactly about that because my Bahasa Indonesian is not that good. It's it's not that good at all. So but uh the only thing I do and people find it surprising is I just simply smile. Smile and sometimes even I speak with in English and they speak in Bahasa, just like it moves very slowly. And I don't know how, it just happened. And I think that's part of the hospitality of the community itself. I think the idea with the, I'm I'm speaking from my point of view for living from from my refugee who are living in Indonesia. And traveling to a different cities, the idea is just trying to be friendly with the community around you. The moment you're becoming friendly with them, they will be open, completely open for you and they will start to. Accept you and accept the idea. But you know, the 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 bad thing is they will keep asking you that question. Why you left your country? What is going on with your country? And for some refugees, uh it's it can bring a previous trauma for them. Uh so it's just like a simple question, a simple like uh favor. You know, don't try to keep asking that question for refugees because not everyone could be happy to answer that answer because. To answer that question because it's a little bit difficult for them. To you know, start to tell all the previous drama they already faced and they are trying every single day to overcome all that. My word that and I love to uh put it in front of me every day, I think it's outstanding. And when I say outstanding, I'm not talking about myself. I'm talking about everyone, especially refugees. I think refugees. Are outstanding in their own way because if you don't have any rights, you don't have a right to work, you don't have a right to. For education, you don't have a right to have a dignity life because it's a transit country. According to the regulation, according to the rules, you don't have any rights. According to the community, that's a different page, but according to the regulation. You don't have any rights. And for refugees to wake up every single day and try to survive every single day. Whether uh you are trying to uh learning uh sports, whether you're trying to educate. Whether you're trying to build your organization, whether you're trying to write your story. Whether you're trying to go out and you know, just make a YouTube channel and talk about refugees or talking about the community or talking about whatever you're talking about. As long as you wake up every single day and you tell yourself, I will be strong today. That makes you as outstanding person. And I think outstanding, it could be. Applied for everyone, but here because I'm a refugee, I'm just like gonna point it very specifically on refugees. Even for children, they are completely outstanding. Uh the women, it's not easy. It's difficult for them, but they are trying very hard. They are trying to have their own voice. They are trying to educate themselves. They they look at their situation and they say, we are not happy about our situation. We want to change. The moment that you're making that decision, you're outstanding person. The moment you open a book or you studied to, you started to study with your son or your daughter who studying any learning. Schools or by themselves, you're outstanding. The moment you have a question and you start to learn to like search for that question and answer for it. You're outstanding. The moment you uh try to go out and learning and the you know. Communicate with the community around you and you know, interact with them and open a conversation with them. That's your outstanding. Some people are have been here for six years, seven years, eight years, ten years and they're still surviving. That's a a complete outstanding for me. Uh so that's the word uh and it's okay. And I'm I want to say it for all refugees. It's okay to be tired. It's okay sometimes to be depressed. It's okay. Sometimes you wake up in the morning and tell yourself, I'm tired. I don't want to do anything. It's okay. It doesn't make you weak. It simply makes you human. Uh it's okay if you one day you lose your temper in your room and say like, so what's next? If you have that right to ask that because I think everyone has the right to ask what's next, especially refugees. You have the right, but never give up. Keep doing what you're doing. If that way is not working, just change it and to try to do another way. And if that way is not working, just keep trying and trying and trying and trying. And I always say, just look at refugees and what they are doing with no rights. Just imagine when you take these special refugees and give them resettlement in one of the countries, what they are gonna do with the all rights. They are, they are gonna conquer the space. Just imagine there are no rights and they're doing all that. So what they're gonna do when they have all the rights? They're gonna do amazing job. That's what I believe. So that's why I believe refugees are outstanding. Back to you, Ali.
Uh yeah, Alina, I really appreciate it. Uh you you have said the the reality and encouraging words are really. Words for refugees and non-refugees even. Uh also, thank you, Alina, for sharing how you educate and empower other refugees. So everyone, please leave uh her questions and our chat feature. Now we are entering the second Q and A session for Rafi and Alina. Please leave your question and. Discussions on the Zoom chat and we will help you connect your question with our speaker. In parallel with this Q and A session, I would like to remind you to please leave the speakers positive and empowering words through Miro platform. So going to the questions, uh we we have got some here, starting from the top. Who was first here? Sonia is asking uh from Mr. Rafi. Uh when it comes to collaborating with society, with host societies or communities to advocate for refugee rights. What are the things that need to be considered so that the collaboration or contribution can be successful? Sir Rafi?
Yeah, uh the things that we have to consider there is.
Yeah, the things that we have to consider there is the fact that the Philippine government is not rich, not like the first word. So it is, it's difficult really to expect what the others are getting from Europe or in Europe, the refugees that are getting Europe. Once you settle to this fact, you can have easy, easy way in dealing with the government. Because you will, we will not be very demanding, we will just to have, to ask for opening opportunities only for us. Opening doors for us. In terms of emergencies, we have a strong collaboration with the Department of Justice. We have direct communication with them. And they are kind enough to always respond to our need or our demand regarding the refugees. We have also for the asylum seekers, we have direct collaboration with the UNHCR office. Although UNHCR office is not the one handling the situation of the refugees, it's the Philippine government. But their intervention also helps a lot. And we are also exploring the, the question or always asking the question to the refugees. What can you do to help yourself and to help others as well? We guide them along the way. Of course, for the new, the new arrivals. We guide them, we help them in finding, either in applying or in finding residence or place to stay. We help them if they need whatever food or material help. But our help will be also not, not that much because we are not big organization as well. So I hope I answered your question. If you need more clarification about things, I can add.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Rafi. We have got another one from Ms. Letitia. Thank you, Parafi, for sharing your incredible story. It's inspiring to hear how you have truly met the Philippines at your home. I'm curious to hear, what's your favorite thing about the Philippines after living there for over 30 years?
Well, my favorite things are a lot, not, it's not limited to one or two. In the Philippines, first we have the democracy here. You can do what you want to do as long as it is within the limit of the law. You can go wherever you want to go, as long as you are not going for illegal things, legal activities. You can even speak whatever you want to speak, either pro or against or anti any government or even the Philippine government. Although we are not encouraging that, but I mean, you have freedom of expression to some degree. And we have free, we have freedom of expression, we have freedom of movement. We have also, the people, the Filipino people are also very good and very kind. Except in one thing, if you try to show them that they are lower than you. Then they start in that time getting against you. But as long as you are respecting them and you treat them at least equal with you. Then they keep on respecting you and they will guide you and help you from the lowest to the top. Filipinos are good. And we adapted here to the Filipino food as long as it does not involve haram food or like pork or blood or something. So therefore, the Filipino food is to some degree delicious and acceptable to the community. We have also our own, we added to the Filipinos here, our culture and our food. We have opened a lot of Arabic restaurants here, so we have exchange of culture, exchange of food, exchange of ideas. And we have, we have a lot of things, but one thing negative about the Filipinos also is that they have the impression that all foreigners are rich. So that's one thing we are trying now to change. We are trying our best to educate people about refugees. Because they believe that once they see you a foreigner, you are rich. Then if you are going to some social services, they will say, oh, you are foreigner, you don't need this. So we are trying to educate the government agencies. At the same time, the Filipino people about refugees, not all, not all people are rich and refugees. Some of them are rich, yes. Some of them have businesses, yes. But many of them are also poor and don't even have food in their table. So what else? The Filipinos are, have very good hospitality, they are very hospitable to us. And they are good. So far, they are good. For the values, you are asking also about the values? Ali?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is the second part of the question, the values?
Yeah, there, there is another question also about the values, yeah.
Okay, for that, you know, we have first to accept ourselves. For the refugees to accept themselves as a refugee. Once you accept yourself, it's easy that others will accept you. If you don't accept yourself, if you didn't accept the way you are, if you pretend that you are someone else, then the people will not accept you. So you have to accept yourself, the way you are, accept that you are a refugee with this kind of circumstances. And start from there, changing your situation or improving your situation. You should have in, in doing that. So, and you should have also that perseverance in doing that. And what else? This is the other parts of, or other questions?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Rafi, talking about the values and about the, your advocacy for negative stereotypes that are about the refugees and everywhere. Also talking about the food, sure, for sure, there is like very delicious foods of Filipinos, like Indonesian foods. Okay, there's another one from Matilda. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Rafi, and service for refugees and asylum seekers. Philippines is an archipelago. Will you be able to also share insights about the local community's acceptance of refugees and asylum seekers? What kind of support is available to ensure integration of refugees and asylum seekers with the local community?
Am I the one who will answer?
Yeah, yeah, it's for you, Mr. Rafi.
Okay, regarding the support from the local community, as I told you, we have a problem regarding the impression of the Filipinos about foreigners in general, that foreigners are rich. However, because of our advocacies with the help of UNHCR and with the help of the Community and Family Services International. We were able to reach to the ILG or Department of Local and Interior Government. And now they issued a memorandum to all government units to extend or to the LGUs, local government units, to extend help and courtesy to refugees who are in need. So this is one of our great helps. So anybody that have a problem, if you will go to the Department of Social Welfare. Of course, they need some endorsement first, then, once they have this endorsement from the Department of Justice, it's a document that you will bring. They will extend for them. In the barangay or this is the, the local level. We call it barangay, I don't know what, how do you call it, your, in other areas. In the barangay, once there is, for example, distribution of aid, refugees are also included. Once there is, for the vaccination, refugees are also included, although they are not given privilege, I mean priority, but they are also as well not discriminated. So they are treated the same like Filipinos. You are not the priority, but at the same time, you are not discriminated, you have to fall in line according to the age category or whatever level, category, category level of the description for the government. So this is, this is the, this is the situation of the refugees and asylum seekers.
Thank you, thank you, quite comprehensive. We have another one from Riska to Rafi and Alina. So just to save some time, we would like to have Alina answering this question. Thank you for sharing your stories. What is your goal or dream? What have you done to achieve it and what keeps you going even though you know that is or hasn't been or won't be an easy journey? Alina, please.
My dreams, my dreams are simple. I would like to have an ID, I would like have passports. I would like to have, to be able to open a bank account under my name. I would like to be able to travel freely. And what did I achieve? Nothing, zero, because I'm still a refugee with no rights. Why still doing it? Why still smiling? It just, I don't have any other options like all other refugees, it's just simply do or die. So either you die or you keep doing and surviving every single day. We don't have the privilege to find any other solutions. So that's one of the reason that I keep doing, because I don't want to die now.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully every other refugee will select the survival. Thank you. We have another question for Alina from Riska. Many people are just being exposed to forced displacement issues and are keen to work with or advocate for refugees. Can you share some guidance on how to involve and support the movement properly and effectively? Anyway, love your presentation. Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. Okay, so one of the things that to make sure that you're advocating to stop the smugglers in the right way. You need to make sure that you're spreading the rule and the regulations of the countries around us. So, because most of the people or most of the smugglers, when they speak, they speak about smuggler and refugees to Indonesia. That's their main ideas. So the first thing you need to do is to spread the regulation of the Australian government, the current regulation. That they're not gonna accept anybody. They used to do that before 2014, but right now they're not accepting anyone. And they're not gonna take you as a refugee, they will never give you a settlement in their country. That's a false hope. You need to make sure because what smugglers do is they are, they are sailing a false hope and false dreams, the refugees. Which is turned to them nightmares when they get trapped or when they're dying oceans or when they get trapped in Christmas islands with, with no rights at all. Where they are literally living like animals, which is very bad the situation there. So the first thing you need to make sure is to spread the regulation of the Australian government among all refugees. And you need to have to do that with all language that refugees understand. So you're doing it in English, which is great, but put in your mind, some refugees, they don't speak English language. So make it, make sure that you conduct like leaflet or a post or whatever, in Arabic, in Afghani language, in Somali language, in all kinds of language. So it's going to be approach all, all in Iranian language and Farsi. So it's gonna be approach every single refugees everywhere. That's the first thing. The second thing supposed to be from the government itself, I'm, I'm not here to speak about any governments, whether Indonesian or Australian. But it's supposed to be from the governments where they have to secure their borders in very strict, strong way. Because the moment refugees living here, it's either they got this, you know, stuck in Christmas island where they live like animals or they die. So both options are very bad. So you need to make sure that this, this end result is what the refugees are going to face. If they choose that way, there is, are, there are no other options at all. It should be that message very, very clear.
Thank you, Alina. Because we are running short in time, we will have some more questions, I wish we can reach all. But I want you to answer it very shortly and briefly. Hi, Alina, thank you for your inspiring story. This is a message from Angita. I'm really touched. I would like to ask a question as a 39 woman and a dentist. You must have been through a lot in Sudan, like you might have achieved so many achievements, experiences and moments that might not be replaced anywhere in the world. How did you, how did you deal with that feeling and what makes you feel empowered during your hard time? Thank you, your words are so powerful. That's it. Shortly, Alina, please.
Yeah, sure. Just like in, in two sentences, I never think about my past, I always look for the future. That's the only thing I do. Because the moment I will think about my past, I will start to cry and I'm gonna waste my time, I will not be able to survive. I only think about the future.
Yeah, yeah, great. We have another message to Alina from Lalong. Thank you for sharing these stories. I was really inspired by them. And my question is, what motivates you to empower the other refugees through education? And what are some of the challenges you have been faced? Question is like the same, but we need your encouragement for other refugees. Okay, Alina, sure.
The, the encouragement is, it just, you need to help someone. Jamal said before, the moment you help someone, you will help yourself. When you, you give the education to someone, you will feel you're educating yourself by you're nourishing your soul. That's my way. You, when you help someone, you're helping yourself also.
Exactly. We have another one from Vina. How do you teach and manage your job, Alina, ad roshan and the middle of pandemic?
So right now I'm working with for all learning center, it's a different learning center. It's not an easy, but we are conducting our classes through online. And because it's very difficult to control all the students in online, we have to decrease the number of the students. So instead of taking in a normal class 15 students, now we're taking between seven to eight students. And we divided them into groups, which is more hours, but that's the only way.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Alina, thank you, Mr. Rafi. For those who are willing to provide words of encouragement to the speakers or refugees in general. But unable to access the Miro, please kindly write it down in the chat so we can add it by ourselves. So we have to move on because we are running short in time. We thank both of our speakers for their, their answers to their questions. And now we want to start our session for the Miro platform. So that we can see some of you have left very good comments in there. You can see it on the screen. Okay, we have got some names here for Jamal, for Saidah, for Rafi. And there should be for Alina as well, if zoom out a little bit, a technical admin. As they have described themselves in a word, Alina as outstanding, Mr. Rafi as leader, Ms. Saidah sensible and Mr. Jamal as runner. I want Alina to go through the other words that have been left by our participants that are describing Alina. Alina, I want you to read the words and, and your branches and kind of know how you elaborate these words for you. Can you please zoom in a little bit, the technical admin for Alina?
I can, I can see the screen, yeah, okay, now.
Okay, is it okay now?
Yes, I can see it, yes.
Great.
Oh, it's so nice. Brave Asian, empowered fighter, I like that. Hardworking, smart, purposeful, beautiful, oh, cool guy, nice advocate for girls' education, feminist, humble person, oh, thank you. So far, educator leader, oh, thank you, friendly, cheerful, powerful, beautiful smile, oh my God, thank you. Rule model, positive vibes, talented, ah, oh, that's very nice. I'm flattering, I'm smiling, I'm laughing now. Thank you, thank you. Oh my God, thank you very much. Dear Alina, God bless you always, you're such a sweet and smart woman. Thank you for sharing inspiring story, Alina, virtual hugs. Ah, thank you. Thank you for your commitment to education, Alina, impact to be remembered. Remembered by these children, brave woman, your community is lucky to have you. Oh my God, thank you. Oh my God, thank you. Oh my God, thank you very much, thank you. It's very powerful words and messages. It show me that I'm, I'm on right way and I'll keep doing what I'm doing. Thank you.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Thank you all for supporting Alina. Okay, Ms. Saidah, if, if we can go to Ms. Saidah's, yeah, section. We, Ms. Saidah has described herself as sensible. Let's see what other people have described her in a word. We, uh, Ms. Saidah has, uh, described herself as sensible. Let's see what other people have described her in a word. Ms. Saidah, please read yours and elaborate and tell us how you feel about this words. Ms. Saidah, are you here with us? Uh, okay, fine, no problem. Uh, how about you, Mr. Rafi?
Words are too small to read, maybe if you could read it for me, Ali?
Okay, okay, so we, we have here, uh, Mr. Rafi in the, in the section as the blue collar. Uh, you have described yourself as a leader, but we have other people have left comments and words for you as a fighter, a legend, caring, perseverance, resi- resilience, brave, creative, kind-hearted, an aspiring entrepreneur, hardworking, eager to learn, visionary, uh, resourceful, uh, adaptability, uh, role model, compassion, born leader, leader, role model, and industrious and inspiring and courageous. So these are the words that are left for you. Uh, we have got some messages here for Mr. Rafi. It's great to hear your presentation, Mr. Rafi. Thank you so much for all the great work. Uh, thank you for sharing your journey. It should be an inspiration to young people, refugees or not, about resilience and hard work. And the other one is, thank you Rafi for your sharing about your experience and, uh, for supporting refugee communities, especially since many refugees must struggle when they first arrive in the country. So these are the words and messages for you, Mr. Rafi. How do you feel about?
Well, I, I feel great. Actually, I'm flattered. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much for that.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Rafi. Um, do we have Jamal here still? Because Jamal was telling us to leave soon because he's got another meeting. No? Saidah, are you here?
I'm here, but I cannot see the screen, that's why.
Okay, okay. So we zoom in for Saidah's section, uh, please. Okay, in purple, you have described yourself as sensible. Can you read or, uh, you want me to read for you?
Yeah, yeah, you, you can read for me.
Okay, 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 good. So people, uh, who have participated in our session have described you as a very good learner, courageous, empowering, strong, purposeful, inspiring, kind-hearted, uh, girl boss, empathie, wonder woman. Wow, I love this one. Beautiful inside out, empowered, caring, tender, energetic, strong and caring. Queen, I admire you. This is the best one as well. Unbreakable. We have got some sentences here for you as well. Uh, thank you for sharing so candidly appreciating the vulnerability and rising above your situation to ensure your experience become a catalyst for improving the situation. I cannot imagine what it feels like to be a mom at fifteen. You're such a strong woman. I so admire you. Stay strong, Saidah. I admire, uh, your resiliency and your effort to advocate for women. May God bless you, your work and your journey ahead. And the last one, thank you for transforming the narrative for women and girls and your community on the importance of educations. Uh, education, very, very, uh, supportive and encouraging words from our participants for Saidah. Saidah, how do you feel for this, uh, support?
Thank you so much. All you, all understand me and my situation. Thank you so much. All make cry today. I'm very, yeah, emotional. Uh, thank you so much, a lot, a lot.
Yeah, 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 very, very happy. I'm receiving messages to read mine as well. So Fabri, could you please go to, uh, I think they have added a section for me as well in this color of turquoise. Okay, I haven't chosen a word to describe myself, but I'm a moderator for today, but here are the very nice words I see. Karen, thank you, thank you, this is a bahasa word. Learner, thinker, unstoppable. Uh, remember that song for this. Good friend and inspiration, smart, highly motivated, friendly and educator, visionary, considerate, cool and smart, eloquent, adaptable and resilient. My cheeks are blushing and it's still, I'm reading sentences for me. Thank you for moderating. This is very an aspiring session. Ali, you're young, but I know your bright future awaits you. Thank you. Uh, dear Ali, you're a good moderator. Thank you for the great job. Keep it up, the good work, best of luck for you. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you all the friends and participants who have written this all for me. Uh, I would like to read for Jamal, uh, as if he is, uh, leaving soon, so we, we don't want to kind of ignore the encouragements for him as well. So would you, Fabri, please go on Jamal's section? The time is very short, that's why I'm rushing and trying to read it faster. So Jamal has described himself as runner, but people here have, uh, left some other good inputs. As cool, an aspiring, resilient, strong, powerful, big heart, adaptive, a man with positive vibe, caring, persistent, perseverance, amazing, an aspiring educator, insightful, fighter, keep running and self-love. Wow. Uh, we will have this, uh, link to send to Jamal, so he could be like having time to read all this as well. But we are reading for him here, even if he's not here now. To Jamal, Jamal, do not ever get tired of to run for your dream, yeah? Remember to take a rest, look back, get back stronger. Uh, that was a lovely quote. After hardship, it will be easier later. It's very good reminder for myself to not complain all the time and look for the rainbow after the rain. Great. You have been so great to reach this point. Keep up the good spirits. Dear Jamal, thank you for sharing and radiating your fearless energy. I literally cried the moment when you said it is home now, it is safe, uh, stay safe, sorry. It is really home and it is safe. We wish all good future and better hopes for refugees here, uh, with us or even not here. So, thank you for sharing your, uh, good inputs and, uh, really, we, we are blessed and, uh, hmm, we, we encourage other refugees to kind of have the same feelings as, as we do now. So we are coming to the closing part. Dear participants, thank you for participating in this, uh, special session. Uh, from this session, uh, I have got some, uh, key takeaways that we can learn from each speaker. Uh, for speaker number one, who was Jamaluddin Muhammadi, the key takeaways are the biggest challenge for majority of refugees living in, in Indonesia is that they are waiting for years to find solutions for their situation, for their next living, including to be able to have legal status. During this journey, they face many problems, including administrative problems, mental health problems with a number of societal cases. Jamal chose the word runner as a word for himself to describe. Uh, this word is literally and figuratively describing his life. Running is his favorite activity and he has been running for the whole of his lifetime. One place to another place and finding better living. Uh, running has its paradox of both exhaustion and pleasure for Jamal. Always, uh, Jamal, Jamal always looks at helping others, just like helping himself. Uh, helping others equals to helping ourselves. It's important to remember that hardship and the pain are just temporary there and will be another save after that. This will be worth it. Jamal also emphasizes that everything starts with how we see ourselves, as the speaker mentioned. As the speakers mentioned, uh, runner, sensible leader, outstanding, positive mind, positive words, no matter how the results are, we can see the world differently. So for speaker, uh, two, we had Saidah Hussein. Uh, uh, in Malaysia, there are many limitations also for refugees living, including having a school, working or et cetera. But now there is some, uh, of the rights already fulfilled, such as a school for her children. The conditions now are different with one in the past, so she wants to help her communi- her community and also her family to gain a better life through many things such as living, uh, such as having a quality of good life and education, marriage rights and et cetera. She learned a lot of living things after moving and now working as community's manager. She is very inspired. There are a lot of people with same background, uh, of her and they are empowering each other. Women, girls, boys, men are hu- all humans. So there are people and, uh, there, there are people and they are the real people who have the rights to empower and they, and to be empowered. The most challenging aspects during work with community that Saidah encountered is that women community had a lot of problem with gaining rights. She also stated that education is very important for women, also for everyone. As the speaker number three, we had Mr. Rafael Hawi. Rafi arrived in Philippines as a student, uh, with a student visa. He was the first Palestinian accepted as refugee in Philippines. After graduate, starting, uh, to work as salesperson since, uh, wartime in Philippines stopped working because the condition regarding with leader, uh, policies, with leadership policies. He is now working for Arab commu- refugee community in Philippines to help the others as nonprofit worker. Unlike, uh, refugees in any Southeast Asia country, refugees in Philippines have freedom to work without work permits and rights, because the Philippine is one of the signatory countries of the United Nations Protocol for Refugees. However, there were times where refugees got discriminated and started to work illegally. But then got rid, uh, with the rights of refugee, uh, claimants. Important life values that he shared, uh, we need to able, uh, were that, uh, we need to able to accept ourselves and later we can move forward and work together. One word to describe, uh, that he chose for himself was leader, as he is the first person of Arab community to lead the others in Philippines living. Uh, Rafi stated that refugees can also be the leader, whether it is for him or herself or others, we just need to start. And our last speaker was Alina Mark. At first, Alina had, uh, had no idea what does refugee mean at the beginning of her journey. And so refugees does not have many choices. There is no privilege attached to refugees. Ultimately, refugees should keep trying, keep moving forward despite all hardships and all the circumstances. Uh, so she is advising everyone never to give up. There are a lot of, uh, problems faced by refugees, including in Indonesia, one of them not, is not having rights, uh, to speak, uh, especially for women. Education is one important thing to help children and women especially. One tip for navigating our work is, uh, Enderfield is by trying, uh, to be friends with people surrounding us. And they, one of the main problems that, uh, of being a refugee for Alina is like having no rights legally and struggling to survive every day. The strong message from Alina was never think of the past, always think about the future. So this were the key takeaways, uh, uh, from our, uh, nice speakers, the very beautiful words and speeches. Uh, we hope, uh, we do hope that this session could voice the voices of refugees and empower others as well. We apologize for any inconvenience during the session and see you soon at the closing plenary session about an hour from now. So I would like to ask everybody to open your cameras, please, for the photo session, uh, group photo. Then we will have our time. Hmm, I see very beautiful faces here. Okay, Fabri, can you, can you help us with the group photo?
Okay, when I go one, two, three, everyone smile. Okay, one, two, three. Once again, the second page, one, two, three. Okay, once more. Okay, one, two, three. Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Fabri. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Thank you for joining our session and I wish you have, uh, learned a lot from our speakers.